Call the meeting to order. This is the October 23 study session of the City Council and joint meeting with the Harbor Commission. Can we have the real call, please?
The record will reflect that all members are present except for Mayor Rosansky, who will be attending shortly.
Okay, thank you. First item is clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilwoman Gardner?
Yes, number 10, that is the Hoag Hospital EIR. Is this the same group that did the one that got the comments from EQAC?
Yes, it is.
You might pass on that they found it hard to read because it was, it didn't seem to be the right pagination and that sort of thing. Maybe they could format it a little bit better?
That's not usually done between draft and final, but we can pay attention to that for the future.
Yes, number nine, it's the completion of the contract for the Back Bay Science Center. And I go by it pretty regularly and I notice that the gate is up and locked. Do we know when that building's going to be accessible to the public? And then also maybe some idea of when, you know, there's going to be exhibits and so on placed inside?
Councilmember Daigle, yes. Generally, they're shooting for after the first of the year programs placed in the teaching lab at least. They still have to move in, they being Fish and Game. And they're, they were given the keys by General Services about 10 days ago and they're going to start to move in, probably take about 30 days to do it. County of Orange needs also about 30 days to move their lab into the new Back Bay Science Center and then to remove the trailers. So everything's kind of centering around the first of the year.
So would it be realistic then, first of the year, the gate will open and people will be able to visit?
The gates are open now, but just when people are there, when Fish and Game staff is there. So people, but it won't be open to the public except on that scheduled basis until after the first of the year.
Okay, thank you.
Dave, do you know when the grand opening is going to begin?
They're looking at Estuary Awareness Day, which is in May of '08. It'll more be an open house than a grand opening.
And then I had one other item, please, that would be S-20. And this is our, we got about $40 million in community projects. And is there a tracking system in place that, that we're able to know on a daily and weekly basis what the status of these projects are?
I could probably answer that question, Councilman, Mayor and Council. The master CIP schedule is updated quarterly and it's posted on the City Public Works website. You can click onto that and you get the latest. So four times a year, we're going to be updating that. If the council needs more specific information, certainly it'd be just as easy to follow up directly with myself or any one of the project managers that you might be aware of that might be responsible for that project.
Okay, so when we look on the website, we would be looking at the most recent update, which could be as old as almost three months old. Okay. So are we tracking them weekly then, or no? Or we just update every quarter?
Internally, we're, you know, we discuss the projects on a weekly basis in our internal staff meetings. But as far as publishing a new schedule, we only do that once a quarter. It's pretty time intensive to update it. We'd be spending an awful lot of man-hours doing that if we did it more often. But if desired and the council wants it, we could certainly update it more often.
Okay. There are some items that I'd be interested in because we're, you know, have the responsibility of executing on the community's money. And that would be items of if there is a delay, the nature of the delay, and any and all cost impacts of the delay.
We intend, and as this report gives you, there are lists about all of the delays, projects that are delayed, projects that are actually advanced, new projects, as well as projects that were completed in that quarter. So if you'd like us to maybe provide more information or in-depth information, we could, we could possibly provide cost information as well, if that's something that's desired.
Great, thank you.
Councilman Webb? Councilman Hen?
Following on the discussion about the CIP report, I would like to request that we enhance the reporting somewhat. Steve, if you can arrange it. I had trouble determining what the originally planned start date and completion dates were for these items that you've discussed in your memo. I appreciate the memo that you've done. But can you enhance your reporting so that we've got something like original start date, revised start date, original completion date, revised completion date? For each of the items that you discuss, it just makes it a lot easier. I couldn't tell from the detailed reports how much they, how much they had moved.
In fact, we've often, we've considered maybe to enhance this, maybe some kind of a spreadsheet that gives you specific dates. So it's kind of easier to look up. The written report does give us good information, but you're correct, and it's a little hard to decipher. So we'll try to improve that.
Yeah, just to make it easy at a glance to tell how much changed. And I would support, if you can do it easily enough, the cost change data as well. And then I had one other question regarding assessment District 99 under new projects. Are we still considering adding that to District 100, or is this a separate standalone analysis that's taking place?
I think we're, both, both options are open to us still. I think there's still plenty of discussion. Our initial thoughts were just to move 99 back on the, on track because it's very easy to move it forward. We're still working with utility companies to see if it might be advantageous to combine it. So I guess that question's yet to be, yet to be answered. And with, in light of all of the fires and how the utility companies are probably going to be even farther behind, we may want to just move forward with 99.
Yeah, I'm happy either way. I'm just curious to see how it comes out.
Councilman Curry?
Yeah, Steve, again on the CIP, I was a little, this is the first I'd heard that there was a delay in the Buffalo Hills lighting. Do we have a status of what the homeowners are thinking in terms of this delay?
Actually, after I wrote the report, I did get information from the HOA that they did want to move forward with the project as it stood. So we're encouraged and we're going to be moving forward with that again.
Can we think we can do that a little faster than May of '08?
We can look into it.
Okay. Thank you.
Notice there are one or two other projects on that list, and it's difficult to speed up every single one of them.
No, just mine.
I realize that. I have a few myself that have been on longer than yours have been on, but I would like to see speeded up, too.
Don speaks like a true ex-public works director. Okay, I have no items for clarification. So the first item on our agenda is an update of the citywide Wi-Fi network. Dave, that's you.
Thank you, Councilmember Selich, Mayor Bertem Selich. And I know you have a tight study session today, so I'm, I'm going to try to move through this fairly quickly. This is an update on the Wi-Fi program that you folks talked about probably a year, 18 months ago. Going to quick remind folks what is Wi-Fi, how the RFP went, and what's happening in the marketplace, and where this could go next, and then for more information. So what is Wi-Fi? Basically, it's a system where you set up antennas throughout the community so folks could log on from their laptop wherever they are in the community. We did a request for proposals. We invited vendors to propose the development of this community-wide network. And they could propose a system that was constructed entirely by that vendor, funded entirely through the vendor's billings for subscriptions, funded by ad revenue, and installed on city streetlights, knowing that Newport Beach is kind of unique and that we own about 95% of our streetlights, as opposed to Edison owning them. We got four responses, EarthLink, Solutria, Metrify, and Azulstar, Tropos. Metrify was the one that we eventually started to negotiate more with, in part because EarthLink, who is the big player right now, actually came to a meeting with us and said, you know what, we're pulling back our proposal. So Metrify responded with a plan that said the city would have to agree to purchase a set amount of services, and that would assume Metrify a long-term revenue stream. And this is called the anchor-tenant model, and it's fairly common in the Wi-Fi business. And in exchange, the residents and businesses would receive the free Wi-Fi, but the city itself would have to commit to migrating a lot of our landline services over to Wi-Fi. Here's what's happening in the marketplace. San Francisco actually put, is putting this on the ballot in November as to whether or not to do it. And that's kind of a step back for that project there. EarthLink cities in Philadelphia, Anaheim, Corpus Christi, and Houston, they only have about 4,000 total subs, as I understand it, as of August. This is per the Wall Street Journal. So it's not going as they expected. There are a couple of other cities looking at our model, Anchorage, Toledo, and Corona. And actually, Corona is now kind of backing away. Chicago is now an EarthLink city that's reconsidering this anchor-tenant-ish arrangement. And then in Lompoc, they decide to design a $2 million city system and they only have about 500 users. So this is, I think, was a kind of awakening for all of us and staff and the Media and Communications Committee to kind of rethink this. And here's why this anchor-tenant concept is so difficult. Cities like ours, including our, our, all the city departments generally, without exception, we don't want to give up those landlines to move important systems over to a, an over-the-airline. It's kind of the, so instead, a lot of the departments proposed the belt-and-suspenders approach. Well, let's do both. Let's keep our landlines and do Wi-Fi and see how that works for a while. But that's where we lose all the cost savings associated with this, this process if we don't, if we do the belt-and-suspenders approach. Because again, with dual systems, there's no savings. Some cities have been willing to do this, including Riverside. But basically, and I'm reporting back the consensus of the Media and Communications Committee, and a reminder for you, that's Mr. Curry, Councilmember Daigle is the chairwoman of it, and Councilmember Gardner. The thought is to let this, the market sort this out a little bit more, including seeing if the cable or telephone companies, such as Time Warner, Cox, or AT&amp;T, might have a concept worth looking at. And then see potentially if Metrify has another option or other concepts. They don't right now. So in effect, what I'm saying is this is going to be backburnered for a little while unless we hear, unless I hear strong objections from the rest of the council. For more information, that's my email, my phone number. Happy to take any questions you might have.
Councilman Curry?
Yes, thank you, Dave. I initially frankly was very enthusiastic about the concept of citywide Wi-Fi because it helps not only our students, but our visitors stay connected while the community gives us a technological edge. It is clear from the work that we've done and from the RFP responses and in talking to people in the industry that the business model that was proposed is not a viable business model, as these companies are determining. And to pursue that further would probably be done at the potential for great expense to the city. The more likely scenario in my own mind is that the WiMAX technology will begin to develop and be deployed, which is a much more robust technology with fewer objections by community activists and frankly provides a better quality of service. And I think as we see that develop, we'll be able to adapt frankly to a better service than we would have had with Wi-Fi going forward in the future. I think the city was benefited by having gone through it, and I think this is an example of where rather than rushing headlong into something, we took the time to look at it, to research it, to see the problem, see what other people were doing, and then step away when it didn't look good.
Councilman Daigle?
I, it may be that with the cable companies, we have two with franchises here in Newport Beach, that, that that will be the, the solution on the Wi-Fi ultimately. I know the cable, when they tried to sell it for, one company for $9.99, it wasn't selling as a standalone product, but when they added on free to, you know, something that does sell, like the NFL package, then it, you know, was something that was being placed out there. So that might be an opportunity in the future, and we'll certainly consider that when that becomes available.
Any other comments? Thanks, Dave. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the proposed wireless telecommunications facility at Mariners Park. Janet?
I need to recuse myself.
Okay.
Good afternoon, I'm Janet Johnson Brown, Assistant Planner. This is a proposal for the installation of a wireless telecom facility at Mariners Park, which is located at the corner of Dover Drive and Irvine Avenue. I'd like to give just a brief background of how we got to the point where we are today. The representatives from T-Mobile first contacted the city in January 2006, expressing an interest in installing a facility in the park, somewhere in the vicinity of the park. And the Recreation and Senior Services Department indicated an interest in including some type of a tower element in the park that could accommodate scoreboards and/or message boards that could be used for the different various sports activities that take place. But at that time, the funding and the plans for the improvement in the park weren't in place, they were still quite a ways off. So we advised T-Mobile that they would need to wait until the city was further along in the process or find another location. T-Mobile stuck with the location and over time prepared various different design proposals. Then in February of this year, staff presented a proposal to the Media and Communications Committee for their comments and direction. Based on the comments, staff requested that T-Mobile make some refinements to the plans, which they did. And then we were directed to bring the proposal forward to council, for council's consideration. Preliminary design proposed by T-Mobile shows a clock tower structure located next to the new baseball field behind home plate, which is the red dot up there on the screen. The antennas would be completely hidden from view and concealed within the top clock tower, which is approximately 10 by 10 feet in area. And then one more, thanks. The proposed height of the clock tower is 49 feet, which is in excess of the 32-foot height limit in this area. T-Mobile states that the height would be necessary to accommodate antennas and equipment of a second carrier. The telecom ordinance encourages co-location of carriers on the same structure. However, unless a second carrier will be installed as part of this project, staff believes that the proposed height of the tower needs to be reduced. Structures that are in excess of the height limit do require the approval of a use permit subject to specific findings that must be made by either the Planning Commission or the City Council per Chapter 2065 of the zoning code, the height limitation section. Now, because this is a proposed project on city-owned property, authorization from the city, and in this case, City Council, is required before T-Mobile can submit an application. So staff is requesting City Council's direction and comments on the proposed project. We haven't processed a permit for this type of an installation at this point in time in the city. So our first question of council is whether or not the city would be interested in allowing a monument or neighborhood landmark in the park, such as this structure? And if this is something you believe would be a benefit to the community and to the If you do believe that this is an appropriate and beneficial structure or element in the park, then the next question is whether or not you're comfortable with allowing the height of the structure to exceed the height limit in this area. And then if you're okay with allowing the structure to exceed the height limit, there would be two ways that we could bring this project forward for processing. The first and perhaps more streamlined manner would be to direct staff to bring the telecom permit application directly to City Council for review and approval of a municipal monument and telecom facility at a height approved by City Council. In this case, council may want to refer the application to the Planning Commission for their review and comments on the appearance and location, height and size of the tower element. Or City Council may wish to direct staff to refer the project to Planning Commission for approval of a use permit prior to taking an action on the telecom permit. If that is the case, the findings to exceed the height limit may be difficult to make, in particular the height, excuse me, in particular the finding that states that the increased building height would result in more public visual open space and views than what is required by the basic height limit. Last of all, if council doesn't find that the height is appropriate for the proposed tower and is not appropriate for the community, we can refer this back to T-Mobile and direct them to lower the tower to a maximum allowable height limit of 32 feet and see where they want to go with this. That concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions. And we also have representatives from T-Mobile here that can answer a question.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Webb?
Just to clarify things, I live within a 600 to 700 feet from where this tower would go. So it's over the 500 feet, but it is in the park across the street from my house. Do I have a conflict?
I believe that the determination would be within 500 feet of the boundaries where the project is being proposed, not the boundaries of the park. But not having asked to look at that before the meeting, I'm not clear on it. But I believe that because you're outside of the 500 feet and this particular project site is without, not within the boundaries of the, of the 500 feet, that you probably would not have a conflict.
Okay. Public Works Director, the improvements on the baseball diamond and the backstop, if I remember correctly, the height of the backstop is either 35 or 40 feet is, I can't remember which it is.
I'd have to look at the plans, but I-
I think that there's 30-foot poles and 40-foot poles.
Yeah.
So that this would be 10 feet taller than the backstop.
Yeah.
If that's the case. I had thought that we had discussed, or some of the proposals that have been made, had indicated that it was only going to be 40 feet rather than 49 feet. So just some thoughts.
Councilman Curry?
Do we have a fee policy in place for facilities such as this? And if so, what would be the revenue generated to the city from locating this facility in the park?
The telecom license agreements are generally handled by our Revenue Division. We do have a set fee policy in place. The equipment leasing area, if it's less than 150 square feet, I believe, would generate $1,800 a month. There may be an additional fee for the antennas, but we haven't worked those details out yet as we're, we don't know if we have an application or not.
I would only point out that that's a significant revenue raiser for cities that have located cable or telecom facilities in their public spaces. And we should be sure that we're sort of state-of-the-art in terms of our fee structure for that.
Councilwoman Gardner?
When they designed the park, there was public outreach, I believe, in helping with the design. Was something like this, a clock tower part of that design ever proposed?
Yes, Councilwoman, I think, I think it was tossed around as a concept early on.
So this isn't something brand new?
No, it's not completely brand new. They're, they're-
I should, I should ask, since it was tossed around, was it also tossed out vehemently, or was it?
No, I don't think there was any real opposition to it. I think it does have some attractive elements to the sports groups regarding the potential for having some kind of display cases and information displays, maybe even a scoreboard of some kind. But I think they're all intrigued with it. They are all interested to see what is it really going to look like before they make their final decision or opinion.
And then I don't know whether the carrier representatives want to answer this, or whether you do. But if it is lowered, does it still work? Forget the co-carrier at this moment, but I don't know enough about the science. Know if there's a certain height that it has to be. So whether, if we did lower it, it would still work as, as a signal?
I believe it could work at a lower height limit, but that would probably be better answered by the representatives from T-Mobile.
Hey, I've got a couple of questions. If it's kept at the 49-foot height and there's only one carrier on it, does that leave it open in the future for another carrier to take the higher position?
T-Mobile wants to put their antennas at the higher location.
Oh, they're at the highest.
So it would put them at a secondary, yes.
So they would want the 49 feet, whether there's one or two carriers on it?
That's what they're requesting. It's up to us, to City Council, to direct them as to what height limit they would allow.
So I guess, I guess the question to us then is do we want to go the extra height or reduce it and the coverage will suffer if it goes to a lower height? Is that basically the issue?
I, I'm not an expert. I can't say that coverage would suffer. It would probably preclude the ability to have a second carrier locate on the tower. But I don't know how it would affect the coverage.
Okay. And then who's, is the- Okay, and then who's, is the city going to actually own the structure? Or the carrier going to own the structure? Who's going to own the structure?
I'm sorry, I don't know exactly how the details are going to be worked out. I know that T-Mobile was going to bear the cost of construction, how the maintenance of the building would be handled, I think it's going to be a joint type of an agreement. We haven't gotten into the details of that.
Okay, and then for the city attorney, since this is on city property, and if it's owned by the city, does it really have to go through a use permit process? And is it subject to the height limitations?
No, it does not have to go to, through a use permit process, except for the way we adopted our telecom communications ordinance. We allowed them to exceed the height limits if they get a use permit. So that's the only reason why the use permit is being proposed, because they're asking for the increase over the height limits. Otherwise, they do have to comply with the height limits, that's the way the ordinance is drafted.
And so we do that on all other city property, where they come in and-
Yes.
Do them on light poles or whatever? They get a use permit if they go over that, the basic kind of limit?
Correct.
And where is the height limit established on this property? What part of the zoning code?
I don't know, I didn't do the analysis.
It's in the height limitation zone, it's the thirty-two-fifty height limitation, Chapter 2065 of the zoning code.
And that applies to publicly-owned property as well as privately-owned property? Or is that something that's open to interpretation?
The zoning code has never been, is not clear on whether the use permit process applies to government projects or city projects on its own property, but this is a privately-proposed project, so we would, we have in the past applied these types of applications, the zoning code to these types of applications.
Okay.
And that's the way the code is set up.
Okay, and then on the design of the, of the clock tower, I suppose what we're looking at in this photograph is kind of a generic design, and the details of the message board and all of that haven't been worked out at all?
That's correct, the details have not been worked out yet.
Okay, Councilman Hen?
Yeah, well, that was part of the question that I had, it's not clear to me where a scoreboard would go on that.
One of the considerations that was discussed is changing it from a square to perhaps more of a diamond shape, where it would be at a less of an angle, more of like a forty-degree angle, to the field, so that the people sitting on the sidelines, looking at the field, could look to see it this way. It's just ideas, conceptual ideas that have been discussed over time.
Getting back to the public outreach, it seems to me pretty clear that there was not really public outreach as to this issue, where people focused in on the need for a clock tower, scoreboard, cellphone facility here. And I'm, I for one, I'm a little concerned about just going ahead and making a decision in the absence of public outreach on a question like this. It's a tall structure, it's, there are people that live around there that may have an opinion, and I'd like to hear from the sports community about that as well. So, am I wrong about that? I mean, can we just talk about that for another minute, the public outreach that was done
Councilmember Hen, a couple of comments on that. The, the way that our telecom ordinance is set up is that this experience with you folks is kind of a first blush, and do you like it, do you not like it, should we even allow the applicant to present a formal presentation, and that's why we're here? I did ask that the residents in this neighborhood be notified by mail, and we did that last week, of this hearing today, so they could come in, sit, sit in and listen, and offer, also offer comments in public comment time. I don't know how many did, I imagine a few did, just of this specific element. So they got something in the mail last week stating that this was coming to this, this hearing today, about this specific item. But, directly answering your question, if this were to come forward again, it needs one more council review as a complete package, and that would allow for additional, additional noticing, additional public comment. This is an opportunity to either kind of say, no, we don't, never want to see this again, or, yeah, maybe bring it back with, with some modifications and encourage the applicant to do something different.
Councilman Webb?
Yes, as far as public outreach is concerned, really, we haven't had public outreach per se, except along with the library design, in which we looked at how we were going to replace the baseball facilities within the park once the library was moved to its present site. So that during the, the layouts and discussions related to the, the baseball function, there was a committee that looked at the recreational needs within the area, and I think that probably a scoreboard was probably mentioned, it was not considered at that time that there would be a cellphone tower. I know that when T-Mobile first came through, they were talking about trying to put it in the fire department's hose tower, but that was just before we remodeled the fire station and took the hose tower down. This is a, a location that they've looked at, and they've, they've looked at a number of locations within the area, but you're right, there has not been any public outreach other than sending a notice out for this meeting.
So is that something you would be doing then, if the council gave you the go-ahead?
Yes.
Okay. And I presume we'll hear from the technical representatives here about those earlier questions that were raised?
And I think there are also several residents that are here, Tim.
Okay, let's have-
I have one question.
Okay.
With the co-carrier, do we get two fees?
Yes.
And Janet, if we had only one carrier, what would be the height? And I don't understand the height that the antennas would be, and, you know, what that second story would be. Would it take it down to thirty-two feet then?
I don't believe that a, for this particular facility, for two carriers, if we lowered it to thirty-two feet, it would work for a second carrier.
No, but I mean, just for one, if we only had one carrier and didn't want two, how tall would the structure be?
They're, right now, like I said, T-Mobile is requesting forty-nine feet, I think we need to ask them what they're, can work with, how low they can go.
Okay, let's hear from the T-Mobile representative, then we'll hear from any residents that want to talk.
My name is Joe Thompson, I'm with T-Mobile. What do we start? The forty-nine feet is needed just because it's in the context of where it's located, among the trees. We can bring it down to thirty-two feet, but then I would probably have to place it either somewhere else in the park, or cut down the trees somewhat to accommodate the signal. We, when we go out and look for a site, we always try to co-locate just because it's the least path of resistance. The other carriers do the same, especially in an area like this, which is completely surrounded by residential, which is the RF objective. So we're trying to cover all the homes, and whether you're aware of it or not, there's a big move right now, just to get rid of wire services in a lot of the residences, because they're using their mobile phones all the time, and in an effort to save money, there's more and more residences just going to, to mobile and giving up the wire. That being said, this could accommodate another carrier, and most likely will. Again, it's in a very difficult area, residential is always hard to cover, so if an opportunity arises, there's generally knowledge that something is open. So again, forty-nine feet would work for us, but if I needed to reduce it to thirty-two, there goes the other carrier, and I would probably have to adjust the site somewhat to make it work.
About forty feet?
We could talk about that. I don't know if I can answer it now, but I'm not an RF engineer, I'm just a zoning manager for Southern California, so.
If, if the trees grow, do you have to then raise the tower?
We're hoping those trees are mature enough that they don't grow any longer, and we take that into consideration when we choose a location in the park.
Don't think about cutting them down.
Then we need forty-nine feet then. In addition, we would engineer the, the footings to accommodate the weight of any scoreboard that you would want to add, and that would probably go on that middle covered portion, or I'm sure we can get a scoreboard that would go from, from pillar to pillar and be mounted as such. In regard to the design, we worked with the same architect that designed the rest of the structures in the park. He came over to our office, and he had worked, like I said, in the context of what was designed there, so that's just not an arbitrary design, I think that was some thought put into it by the architect. In regard to the revenue for the city, we would own the tower. We would pay the city our rent for the tower. However, I believe the way that it's set up with the city is, we would own the tower, we would get the revenue from the tower in regard to the antennas, but because there is not adequate room in the tower for the equipment, I believe your fee structure is based on square footage of that equipment, they would have to put that somewhere else other than in the tower, as we did. I think it's down further toward the racquetball courts, and then your fee would be from a subsequent carrier based on the size of their equipment, lease area.
If you owned the, the tower, are you going to manage the scoreboard?
Probably not.
All of that is negotiable.
Generally, if there's add-ons that are very local-based, meaning that, you know, someone's got to be there to run the scoreboard, to, you know, to fix it if it goes down, I mean, we certainly can't staff anybody there and check to see if the scoreboard goes down, or, you know, it just, we are required, a lot of exactions are asked of us throughout Southern California. So we do our best to accommodate when we can, but I, I think in this instance anyway, we're providing enhanced phone coverage to the area, and that's the main objective here.
So if the, if this goes in with only you as the carrier, then a second carrier comes along, then they come in and they pay you to-
They pay me for the antenna space, and they pay you for the equipment space.
If we can find a location for them to put their-
I think there's plenty of that.
Councilman Hen?
Yeah, I just want to be absolutely clear, so if, if this is either thirty-two feet or forty-two feet, and you're not allowed to cut down trees, you can, you would still want to go forward?
I would, but I can't guarantee at this moment that I can locate in the same place in the park, with the trees being where they are, that thirty-two feet will work. My problem is the trees, getting over the trees, and that's why we had to do forty-nine feet. And the way that, I'm not sure if that is as accurate as, as it could be, but those antennas inside, behind the clock, are, they have an electronic down tilt, and also a, you know, axis that they can, an axis point. So we can control the azimuth of the antennas and the down tilt, and those would have to shoot between those trees to even work for us.
I have a question. If you have a problem with the trees, then how would somebody that would co-locate their antennas, say, six feet below yours, not have a problem with the trees?
Because their network is different than ours, and it works on a lineup by lines, line of sight basis, so if-
So it would be a network, you'd have, it'd have to be somebody with a network that could accommodate the trees?
Correct.
Any other questions?
I noticed that your equipment is being located, at least on the drawing you submitted, over by the tennis courts, right next to where I thought we were going to have the storage for the baseball fields. Is there enough room for their cabinet plus the baseball field?
We would have to look at that and work it out, and there could be access, we might have to modify.
It seemed like to me a much more logical spot would be over along Dover, right next to the, the handball courts, there's about a twelve-by-twenty area over there that would allow them access with their vehicles, so they wouldn't have to be driving into the park.
The photo simulation that I have shows the equipment by the racquetball courts.
On the Dover side of the racquetball court is where I'm suggesting. But you didn't give us those exhibits, so we can't really tell what you're talking about.
I can put the equipment wherever you find it's best placed, as long as it's not too far from the antennas.
Mr. Thompson, how can we make sure that the whole height thing isn't a ruse, that there really isn't a feasible way for a second carrier to come in, that you feel like you need forty-nine feet because of your RF ones?
I can certainly provide an RF justification study for the council, and if you have an in-house RF engineer or a consultant, you can verify, I think, our justification.
What, what is, what is the size of your building? It looks fairly significant on your cross-sections, what's the dimensions of it?
The building which houses the equipment, or the-
Yes. I don't have my scale here, but it looks like it's eight to ten feet tall, and twenty, I would say probably thirty feet long, and I can't, I don't see a width, that's a huge building.
I have ten feet two by ten feet two, which is the, is that it right there? Oh, oh, we're going within the base of the tower, I'm sorry.
Then what's the building, the E-building that we were talking about over here?
Are those electrical cabinets?
It says electrical cabinets, proposed for the power.
We have electrical cabinets in that vicinity, but they're not that large.
Councilman Webb?
Yeah.
I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I think in that rendering, you're looking at sheet A three, is that right?
Yeah, that's where I was looking at.
I think they're referring to either the existing fire station building or the library building, which is no longer there.
Okay.
The equipment on these plans is proposed to be at the base of the clock tower.
Okay.
She A-one, it shows otherwise.
Yeah, that's not associated with our site at all. And then in regard to community outreach, we certainly will do that, we would like to have the project, the proposal accepted as a project before we go forth with that, but by all means, we would do that, with the help of staff, I hope.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it? Thank you.
Okay, anybody else want to speak on this subject? You step forward? Nobody? Okay, I'll bring it back to council here. Staff's looking for direction on three things, that, do we want to allow the clock tower in the park, do we want forty-nine or thirty-two feet, and what process should we use?
I'd like to suggest that we get a little bit more information related to the height of the, of the backstops, because if, if it's essentially the same stop, same height as the backstop, then you really haven't, we haven't gotten a use permit for the backstop that's out there. I think it's a forty-foot backstop, though, if I remember correctly, but-
Yeah, I'm, I'd have to go check the plans, and I could do that real quick, but it should also be noted that, you know, that the way that backstop's set up, there's only, the lower portion only has permanent fence, and the upper portion actually has removable net, netting, so it's not going to be that big of an eye, you know, aesthetic issue is, as you might think.
Okay, all right. It's, this particular design is, is, I think, relatively attractive design as far as kind of blending into the neighborhood. I'm not sure that I like the forty-nine feet, I think it should be more like forty feet within that area, and I think that we need to look really carefully, because if the equipment that they're, they're talking about using is on the base, then we, that's in the area that you would most want the public to be able to use it. So I would assume that if they have a door on the, on the bottom part, that the other three walls would be able to be used for some sort of public uses from that standpoint. I'd really like to see how the scoreboards might fit into that before we go forward with it, but, and I'd like to see a little bit more community, and I know we sent letters out, I got one, and I see at least two people in the back that got one too, so, and I haven't, in the neighborhood, nobody has talked to me about it and complained.
Anybody disagree with Councilman Webb's comments? Councilman Curry?
No, I, I agree with Councilman Webb. I would like to see the business deal fleshed out a little bit more. It sounds to me like if there's a second carrier or a third carrier that goes on this tower, that the city does not participate in that, and I want to make sure I understand the business transaction, and how that compares to how these are structured in other communities.
Councilman Webb, I'm, Hen?
I would like to see a little more clarity on what the real alternatives are here. I'm still not satisfied with the answers we got about, if it's not forty-nine feet and it goes to forty, what are the alternatives? It sounds to me like the tower might be in a completely different location if it has to be shorter, and I'd like to get more clarity about what the true alternatives are.
I might want to just highlight for the, for the council, the telecom ordinance provides that, once we get direction from the council, that if we have any need for any independent clarity on what their needs are, and the RF requirements for them to be able to get access, and at what height they can accomplish it, and at what height maybe somebody else can, that we can actually hire somebody. If they get direction to go forward, at least to exceed the height limit, then we can hire somebody and have that person check- somebody and have that person check and give the clarity that the council wants, that that in fact is the height that's necessary.
So, that would just be a part of the process after today?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, in that respect, my view is that if there's a way to make it somewhat shorter and blend a little more gracefully into the surrounding improvements, I would be in favor of that as well.
Okay, I think the staff heard that. Councilman Webb, did you have something else? Okay, do you need any other direction from us?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is the joint session with the Harbor Commission. I guess we're supposed to come down here and convene down at the table?
Yes.
Welcome, ladies and gentlemen of the Harbor Commission. Dave, are, Dave, are you handling the staff report on this? Is that how that's working, or is that Tom or...
I'm not, so whoever's starting, why don't you come on up? I think Harbor Commission Chairman Don Lorenz is.
Okay.
By default here.
Thank you for, thank you for giving us this time to get together, and here is probably too long. I'd like to first also thank staff, Tom, Chris, and Dave for putting together this presentation we're going to share with you today. Chris, next slide. Each August, we meet and have an annual planning session, and we put together the goals, review our goals and our mandates as the Harbor Commission. I'd say right now, we're probably meeting most, most of the segments of our mission and charter. Through this list here, you can see some of the open projects and interest things that the Harbor Commission has been working on, will be working on over this coming year. Next slide, please. Some initial statements before I get to the body of my presentation has to do, too, with something that's going to be coming the way of the council and the Harbor Commission is going to be the review of the harbor-wide fees. You know, harbor-wide fees have not been reviewed or adjusted in many years, and so far, as you can see, the appraisal has been completed, the cost of services study has been completed, and the process that staff is utilizing is to try to use the economic analysis to bring items A and B there together into one cohesive presentation that should be coming the way of both of our groups here in the next few months. Next slide, please. Today, I'm going to talk about the mooring issue in Newport Harbor Bay, and the mooring issue is kind of split into two parts. One part has to do with the grand jury report, and the other part has to do with some of the changes that'll, needs to be made to chapter and title seventeen of the municipal code. First of all, the, before the grand jury report was ever, was ever reviewed or revealed to us, there was a subcommittee of the Harbor Commission headed by Commissioner Duffield that was working on the issue. He was working on both the onshore and the offshore moorings, along with members from various yacht clubs, the Newport Beach Mooring Association, and the public. We were taking a wide amount of public input to try to come to a more rational, rational way of administering these moorings in Newport Bay. Some of the grand jury reports, which most of you have seen, have been addressed by this committee, and recommendations are of record right now. Our one here, we tempt, we're attempting to, these new regulations, to reduce or eliminate any kind of possible mooring speculation by brokers or by individuals in the bay. Number two, we're going to try to get the mooring waiting list, which some people estimate that the most senior person who's been on the list for thirty-eight years, to try to get that waiting list to become a functioning, accurate tool in providing for a reasonable and rational way of allocating moorings. Number, on point four, again, getting it through chapter seventeen to fix the regulations to not only handle better mooring administration, but also handle derelict vessels and other issues that affect the quality of life in the harbor. The grand jury recommended that we take a look at a lot of different things to make it fair and equitable as far as the administration. As you can see, and most of you know, if you've lived here for a very long time, that, you know, the moorings have been in the bay for about sixty years, and the administration of them has kind of, kind of evolved. It used to be that there was no waiting list at all for moorings. Now, you know, the list is very long, and a mooring is a very highly sought-after asset for your boat in the bay. Again, the subcommittee fine-tuned the existing management system by, one, we defined who can be a permit holder and who can be a transferee. There have been a lot of different attempts in the record over the years to allow things like corporations to hold moorings, which would probably be counter, not the right thing to do for a public asset. So, we've gotten this back to a natural, natural person instead of any third parties. Number two, defining how a mooring permit can be transferred. Again, this was very loosely administered in some different time periods in the harbor, so we're trying to tighten that up. We're also going to try to increase the supply of moorings available for rental in the bay on both onshore moorings, which, believe it or not, there's a demand for that in the summer, and for offshore moorings, which, of course, there's always a demand for. Also, we're, as I said before, phasing out that waiting list and coming up with a little more rational way of doing it. I mean, frankly, if you were on a list thirty-five years ago, you may now be eighty-five years old, living in Ukepa, and you get a phone call as you just got a forty-foot mooring. You kind of wonder if that person's still interested in boating at all, and if that's really the way to administer moorings, because really, basically, the person now just had a windfall. They may not even own a boat anymore or have any interest in it. And finally, one of the other things that the Harbor Commission has been trying to do for a long time is to build a dedicated fund for harbor improvements. And as we come through the tightening up the administration here, there are several ways that we could build a dedicated fund to handle harbor infrastructure issues in the future. Again, as I said before, here's some of the sample wording on how we plan to tighten this up. One, that it has to be a natural person, that is the contact person and the permittee for the mooring. Again, this is being done as an, for an eye of ease of administration for the part of Harbor Resources, and it makes it easier for them to contact the permittee if there's a problem. And also, we have provided, because we've got a lot of input, considering having some limited right of succession. In other words, if a family's had a mooring and dad passes away, mom still wants to hold the boat there, that there would be a way to handle this. Next slide, please. Additionally, we have provided for vessel partnerships, which has been popular for a long time, seems to be getting more popular again for holding moorings. But again, the test here is going to be, it has to be a natural person who represents the partnership. We've also provided areas here for moorings for marine contractors, which are so important to maintain the bay infrastructure. And also, one of the recommendations is to better formalize and review the agreements between the yacht clubs and the Lidl Island Community Association as it pertains to their administration of the mooring fields. Again, here are the conditions that we've come up with as far as how a mooring permit may be transferred. A mooring still can be transferred. If you sell the boat, you can still move the mooring with the boat. However, here's some other areas that we've come up with to tighten it up. One, obviously, by death of the permit holder. Two, the boat has left the harbor, so the person has the ability to surrender the mooring back to the city. We've also, to eliminate speculation and possible brokerage, put a provisions here on number three and number four, that a person cannot transfer a shore mooring or transfer an offshore mooring more than once every twelve months. Finally, on number five here, a person cannot hold more than two mooring permits. And ideally, this would be two mooring permits, one being a shore mooring, which is common, and one being an offshore mooring. The point here is a lot of times, people have a shore mooring to tie their skiff up to get out to their offshore mooring. That was generally the historical intent of the shore moorings for many, many years in the city. To give you an idea, too, currently, there are about five hundred to, I'm sorry, fifty to a hundred transfers a year of these moorings in the bay. They represent about seven percent of the total moorage that we have in the bay, based on about ten thousand boats. Okay, the rental, okay. As I said before, too, we're going to try to increase the rental supply and better administer it. We're going to allow shore moorage, shore mooring rentals in the summer. We've also eliminated the placeholder rule. The placeholder rule was kind of an interesting rule in the sense that there was this belief that if you didn't have a boat on the mooring, you could lose it. So, I think most of you recognize, maybe five, ten years ago, there were lots and lots of derelict seagull-infested boats laying in the bay. We're not enforcing the placeholder rule anymore, which has cleared off a lot of these boats that are probably not seaworthy and cannot operate. Some of the other tightening up here, any kind of renters, long-term, short-term, must apply their own lines and be liable for damage to the mooring, and also making sure that in these long-term rentals are temporary agreements in nature. Again, this, this next slide discusses how the, the waiting list will work and what the priorities are going to be for being on the list. Number twelve and thirteen shows that we're trying to balance the demand between long-term rentals of vacant moorings and short-term rentals of vacant moorings. Number fourteen, the need to review the fees and establish new fees to promote this. Number sixteen, again, we're not going to allow mooring renters to become livaboards in the bay. Livaboards, as you know, are currently covered under existing regulations and are only permitted by permities. Next slide, we're going to be closing out the old list, continue to clean and purge the old list, and continue to mail and make sure people that are added to the list are actually interested in wanting, wanting, wanting a mooring in Newport Bay. We're going to be charging a nominal, annual fee to cover the administration of this list. This is a very similar procedure to what Catalina does for its offshore mooring supply. Number six here, existing, existing waitlist will be phased out. Number six, yes, there are occasionally moorings that are turned in, but there are some that enter the supply that way. The mooring permit reallocation fee we're proposing will be deposited into the new harbor fund, and we're also have, putting together a recommendation here that if there is a mooring that nobody wants, a process of being able to auction that off to perhaps other people who may want it. Sometimes there are shore moorings, particularly in the back parts of the bay, that nobody seems to want. Finally, proposing a transfer fee to be equal to one year's current mooring permit fee to be deposited into the new fund, and we would propose that there be a waiver to that for family members. Finally, chapter, title seventeen is going to need some wording changes to that, and that was not necessarily the point of my discussion today. That'll be coming to the council shortly. And again, some of these changes are mostly to better handle the mooring administration, derelict, inoperable, unseaworthy vessels. Finally, the mooring master committee still has a little work to do as far as working on some of the administrative aspects of better mooring administration in the bay, and I expect their work to be done shortly. Is there any questions, or I'll hand it over to Mr. Collins?
Mr. Mayor, have questions or comments? I looked at this really closely. I, I think the effort is very well-intentioned. It's a really good thing. There's apparently a lot of buy-in from stakeholders, and I know it's been a, a long process. And I sat down yesterday with Dave Kiff and Tom Ross Miller, and some of the things that I was looking at, I thought as far as the definitions, we have a lot of definitions, vacate, surrender, permanently vacate, abandon, and to eliminate any confusion maybe the city attorney can have is, maybe as few definitions as possible, which will allow for clean administration. And it's not someone coming in saying, "Well, I'm not surrendering it, I'm vacating it," you know, that kind of a thing. And also, I think the fund is a very good idea, and I think it's good that when refunds are given, that they're given out of the harbor fund and the, the general fund is left intact. And I also wanted to make sure as we move along that, you know, that the harbor fund, you know, could be built up so that people come in, they have a problem, you know, a line was slit, you know, they can get reimbursement for that, and the city doesn't say, "Well, all of our money is in projects, you know, we don't have that fund." I also thought it's, it's more to administer, but that's okay. I think there's more protections, and as Dave explained to me, you know, harbor, the Harbor Patrol will simply have, you know, another set of forms for people to fill out. As far as the allocation scheme, I think it's good in, in the sense that it doesn't rock the boat of a lot of entrenched interests such as yacht clubs, so I think we'll get buy-in on that. And then the other area is on vacancies and rentals. It's at fifteen days that you have to notify, and I was thinking closer to thirty days, because let's say somebody goes to Catalina for ten days and they come back, and, and as you know, there's some, a boat on their mooring, you know, and Harbor Patrol will quickly fill those moorings, so I was thinking something closer to that. So, those would be my comments, and I thank you all for your hard work.
Thank you. I'd like now to introduce Tim Collins.
Councilman Hem?
Just one more question here, just for clarity. So, what is the approximate amount of the transfer fee that you're being, that you're discussing? Just ballpark here.
Well, the current one is very, very small, probably less than maybe fifty bucks for a very large mooring. I think there'll be a proposal in the harbor-wide fee study, which I haven't even seen or proposed, seen a number for that yet.
So, it'll be based upon...
Probably the recommendations of the consultants and appraisers that have been hired by the city.
What's the current annual fee for a mooring based on? It's, it's so much per foot or...
It's so much per foot, set by council policy.
Which is approximately what?
It's about twenty dollars a foot for an offshore and, well, how much for, ten for an onshore.
Per year.
Per year.
That's not much. Is there, is there a fee for putting your name on the waiting list?
No.
It's not mine.
No, there's, there's no fee that I'm aware of, but putting it on or maintaining it, that's why it was kind of the, the best deal in town.
But your recommendation now is not to charge a fee for putting your name on...
I think our recommendation is to charge like a five-dollar annual fee to stay on the list, much like the way Catalina does. So, one, people that are still interested, you know, still maintain their names on the list, and it'll cover the cost of mailing, and so these people, you know, administrative costs for doing that each year.
Did you survey other jurisdictions that have moorings and coming up with these recommendations?
On a limited basis, we did. There, you know, a lot of the other places like Catalina are probably the closest one to us, but as far as, if you're getting at fees, is the nut of your question...
Well, not just the whole process of transferability and lists, the whole thing?
Yes, I did look at both, the way that the conservancy handles the moorings off Catalina, and then that's different from the way Avalon handles the moorings. Avalon is probably a little closer to what we're proposing.
So, those are the two you looked at?
Yes.
Don, for the folks watching at home who've read the grand jury report and are concerned about whether or not the mooring allocations are fair or not, sort of, can you summarize how this new changes are going to be, result in somebody being able to get a mooring fairer and faster going forward, and how this will improve the current state of affairs? Just the sort of short answer?
Well, I think it'll improve the state of affairs in the sense that hopefully, one, the list will have people on it that are anxiously waiting moorings. Two, people that have a boat right now and, and want a mooring that are on the list will be able to get long-term rentals of the moorings, so they'll have a place to put their boat, which is probably the most, most, biggest thing in their mind in the short run. I think finally, the end, it should provide a more rational way of making moorings available to people, I think, than, than the, the old way where it was kind of a back alley kind of thing. It might even be nice if, if part of this process, that Harbor Resources in some way knew whether there were possible available, available moorings that might be available to people.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Good afternoon, councilpeople. I'd like to move into the next subject, which is the dredging of our Good Bay. The slide, the picture actually that is on the screen should be self-evident, but that is a situation that is occurring more and more frequently in our bay where sailboats run aground due to limited bottoms. I might add that our local racers have begun to deal with this. They've learned by experience, and they watch tide times, and they avoid the incidents. The risks lie in our number of visitors who come to race or... The risks lie in our number of visitors who come to race or just to cruise, coming in at undesirable tide conditions and running aground. I think it's only a matter of time until this is going to result in a serious injury or worse. Grounded vessels, I don't know that the statistics that we have been provided are really capturing all of the incidents, because as someone who is on the water along with many of my fellow commissioners who are competitive sailors, it happens on a daily basis. Next slide, please. Another consequence is waterside damage that results from the lack of dredging, and you see here again visually boats aground at their docks as well as slips that are full of sand. Again, I'd ask the council to put on your risk management hats and measure the potential for liability to property owners for property damage, and even the argument that there's been a taking due to the loss of use of their slips and/or property. Next slide. Taking an aerial view here, I'd like you to just look at the red areas, which are problematic shoaling conditions. And shoaling for purposes of this graph is defined as having less than three meters in depth. In fact, this harbor has been designed to be dredged to ten to twenty feet, and even since, all of these studies were compiled for purposes of this illustration, which is over a year and a half old, depths are probably more in the eight to eight-foot range than in the nine to ten-foot range.
Is that high tide, low tide, median tide?
Median-low tide. And I had asked if it were possible, and it was not possible, but I thought it would be compelling to, if you could see this same graphic with an overlay of our second great constraint in the harbor, which is eelgrass, and if we were, had been able to do it, which we couldn't because the scales of our data were dissimilar, over sixty percent of the harbor area would show visual constraint due to either sediment buildup or eelgrass. Next slide, please. To look at the history of our dredging activities, as you all know, between 1906 and 1936, about three million cubic yards were removed to create this harbor. Over the years in between, we have seen minimal removals. In 1981, eighty-two thousand cubic yards; 1998, one-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand cubic yards; 2003, forty-three thousand cubic yards; an average of about ninety-six thousand cubic yards every eight years. I think the trend is evident, given population growth and uplands development over the last three decades. Just to stay even, removals should have been two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand cubic yards every five years. The previous plan that was reviewed with the Army Corps of Engineers was to complete their emergency dredging of four-hundred-thousand cubic yards. That's four-hundred-thousand out of a nine-hundred-thousand cubic yard exposure that they themselves, the Corps, have measured as it relates to sediment buildup. So we're only taking four-ninths of the sediment away to create minimal conditions. Implementing this project is an opportunity at hand. We have a contractor in the bay. We don't have the money to pay for it. We understand that you have been considered in with favor, up to a million-dollar contribution to try and induce the feds, but absent the federal budget, nothing has happened. And again, I emphasize, it does not remove another six-hundred-thousand cubic yards. It would remain in the federal area of responsibilities, another hundred-thousand cubic yards up in the Rhine Channel, and we can't forget the fifty-thousand cubic yards in West Newport. We suggest a change in strategy, which staff and the harbor commission have been tossing around for the last year, and that is to move the city into a maintenance responsibility in the future. That has been posed to the Corps, who have viewed it with favor, and the communications continue. Certain of us commissioners will be meeting to further that communication opportunity with the Colonel. Our upper bay project, when completed, would help to reduce and protect the lower bay from impacts, but again, we've done nothing for the lower bay with all that's been done for the last two years with the contractor in the harbor. We still have exposure to natural disasters that can further disrupt the status quo or create a greater deficit than those that I've described. We have tried, as harbor commission, to look at financing options, and our goal here has been simple, to find a fair, a balanced sharing of the dredging maintenance cost that would be spread across all generators, users, waterfront developers, and contractors. Next slide. One of the important mechanisms that I think you're all somewhat familiar with, but it doesn't hurt to revisit, is where our RGP permit is in the scheme of things. Appreciate, we renew that every five years. It actually expired the last go-round, and it was a struggle for us to reinstate it. It's been in place for a little more than a year, and before long, we're going to be back at its renewal. Challenges are ever-present. It allows for dredging up to twenty-thousand cubic yards, not sufficient, given the backlog of dredging and the engineering and environmental restrictions that we deal with, and it's just one important piece of the dredging machine. However, we are on a very strong footing for future maintenance operations, and we will build upon it. We will treat its compliance as a priority. We want to, to let you know that we understand the importance of lower bay dredging as part of an overall comprehensive source control for our watershed. This slide depicts the myriad of stakeholders and the agencies that we have to involve, and to put it into its grand scheme of financial commitment. Appreciate that this city and these agencies have committed in excess of one-hundred-and-forty-five million dollars to this broader chore. So the thirteen to eighteen million dollars that we have earmarked for various degrees of emergency dredging really pales by comparison. Nevertheless, it is a bill and a tab that will be taken on to be spread over every year for years to come. We understand the scientific interagency bureau requirements, and there's a burden, and we're interested in developing near, mid, and long-term solutions. Our staff and consultants are up to the task, albeit a big one. Quick touch to the ecosystem restoration project. Again, we can build on strengths. This city has shown leadership and has been recognized for the progress in the upper bay. We'd like to see that expertise transferred to the lower bay. Lastly, I think one of the near-term and more challenging parts that is a time sucker in terms of getting permit readiness is going to be the Rhine Channel and sediment sampling that has been done in and around that area, and unfortunately, even lower than the Rhine Channel. The studies and the homework have been done. They are continuing. We believe that there are alternative projects that have been well-documented, studied, and that this project is ready to move to an implementation phase. It has to be done in a context of a comprehensive dredging program. In conclusion, we on the harbor commission suggest that council move and continue the change in mindset to stop looking at dredging simply as an issue and to view it instead as an essential, regional service as basic as street sweeping or storm drain maintenance. In this case, it's our harbor, our number-one asset, as viewed by our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Could you go back to the slide that shows the shoaling areas? When you mentioned that you would have four-hundred-thousand yards in kind of an emergency permit area, can you show roughly what areas might be involved in that four-hundred-thousand and where the other six-hundred-thousand would be?
The emphasis is going to be given to this area, this area, and I think probably of the four-hundred-thousand, I would say eighty percent of it is in those areas.
How much of that is actually in the federal channels?
All of it. You would have some under the moorings, I guess that would be, that would not be, but everything else would be. Correct?
Tom Rossmiller, Harbor Resources manager. The moorings are within the federal area of responsibility. There are federal channels within the bay, but the Corps' area of responsibility is from project line to project line on opposite shores, so it's all Corps responsibility in this chart.
In nineteen thirty-six, when they did the dredging, though, that they primarily just worked on the main channel that went from really the jetty up the North Lido Channel?
Up to the turning basin, yes. The turning basin. There was a city and county project along, along Balboa Peninsula at that time, and the Corps project was primarily up through here all the way to the turning basin, but there were other areas that they did complete to their design depth. There are some areas of the harbor, for example, in that B mooring area, where Army Corps did never, never did dredge to their design depths of minus fifteen.
Tom, it might be helpful to explain what's meant by the federal lines?
Sure. There's three harbor lines that Congress has established for Newport Harbor. There's the bulkhead line, which is typically right on top of the property line, although there are some locations in the harbor where that is not true, where the bulkhead line might be out in water or back in land, based on what the Army Corps and the city engineer thought was going to be the development of the city at that time. For example, north bayfront, the bulkhead line, is a straight line across the whole north bayfront, but as you know, there's an indentation in the middle part of north bayfront, so that's an anomaly. There's a project line, which is the next line out, that is generally the furthest extent of the piers. Excuse me, a pier headline is the furthest extent of the piers, and then the project line is the line that the Army Corps of Engineers dredges to so that they don't undermine any of the pilings at the piers. So the project line is just for the Army Corps' maintenance responsibility.
Have they, have they ever actually dredged as a part of the Corps of Engineers project after nineteen thirty-six?
They have dredged.
In the entrance channel?
In the entrance channel, and then post El Nino storm in nineteen ninety-seven, ninety-eight, we got FEMA money and OES money to dredge this area here.
Wasn't that also part of another dredging project in the upper bay?
No.
Kind of a nag on at the end?
It was independent, with OES and FEMA funds.
Thank you, Tom. Eelgrass?
Good evening. Go ahead, let's see the next slide. The city has received a grant.
Seymour, introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry, Seymour B., Balboa Island. The city has received a grant to generate a harbor area management plan, and what that does basically is to balance environmental issues against the uses of the harbor. I look at it another way. I think it's a way to quantify and refine the objectives of our harbor and bay element of the general plan, and perhaps protect us from future unwanted tinkering in our affairs of the harbor, because it would be done to something that would be quantified and refined. As for the last bullets, we have retained a consulting team or a consultant to prepare a draft, and staff has had some dialogue with a consultant, but the harbor commission hasn't gotten involved yet, and I hope we will soon. If you go on to the next slide. Now, my favorite subject, eelgrass. This is the real reason we started down the path of a harbor area management plan, is because we had this roadblock to maintenance dredging thrown up by some of the agencies, and they put restrictions on what has been a normal historic dredging and beach replenishment cycle that's been going on for decades in the harbor, by requiring that property owners that were dredging under the regional general permit couldn't dredge within fifteen feet of any eelgrass. Well, eelgrass has made such a great rebound in the harbor that it's growing almost everywhere, so most places on Balboa Island, for example, you can't dredge. So the result has been, as you saw in a previous slide, there were docks on the ground and a boat aground at low tide. That's the norm around a lot of Balboa Island, and people cannot dredge under their piers and therefore cannot replenish the beaches. So we need a reasonable baseline for eelgrass, an amount that's required, and an allowable loss. In my opinion, if there hadn't been any of this eelgrass requirement, we'd gone right on with the way we used to do it, the dredging and beach replenishment. There would have been a negligible loss of eelgrass. It really wouldn't have made any difference to the harbor, to the fishery in the harbor, or anything else. So as to the last bullet, I think that it's great that the city has retained a law firm to study a strategy, and I think it's probably overdue, but I certainly applaud that, and I think probably many in our audience do also. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Seymour.
Where on your map is the area that we were considering as a mitigation area, developing a mitigation area so that we could remove some areas and have it, use that as the mitigation?
We considered several areas. Do you want to take a shot at that, Chris?
Sure. Chris Miller, Harbor Resources. There were seven sites, and they were, they were up the peninsula here primarily on the south, south side of Lido, one on the north side, and a couple up here in this general area. So we were more or less focusing in the upper part, not the upper bay, but the upper part of the lower bay.
Thank you. Marshall Duffield.
Hi.
Hi.
Marshall Duffy Duffield. I'm chairman of the mooring master plan subcommittee, and I thought it'd be interesting, well, it was pretty boring until the grand jury came along, but I'm also proud to say we're the longest-running subcommittee. I don't think there's a sunset in sight, actually. So that's nice. What I wanted to, what slide are you, oh, good, okay. So what I thought I'd do is real fast, try to be brief, because you've already heard about the moorings, but what was the need to start and to even have a subcommittee? And I thought it'd be good to go over that. So, real fast, for the better part of fifty-five years, there were no questions asked, nothing went wrong, so why now? What's changed? The harbor commission, I think, well, was informed that the Army Corps of Engineers required a plan for moving the moorings during dredging, and then how the moorings were going to be relocated. Without the plan, no dredging, and that got our attention. At the same time, harbor commission, the harbor resource department was getting frustrated not having a document to spell out exactly how mooring issues were handled. As the years passed, since the moorings were installed sixty years ago, various issues would pop up, causing gray areas, I would call them. An example would be, "I want to know if I can increase my forty-foot mooring to a fifty-foot mooring." Okay? Another one would be, "The boat next to my mooring is never used, and it stinks of bird droppings. What do I do?" Those are just some small examples of what Chris and Tom have to go through, and there's real no- Those are just some small examples of what Chris and Tom have to go through, and there's real no answers to it. In addition to this, city manager, assistant manager, had a concern regarding the waitlist, I'll call it fairness factor. And he felt needed, he felt something needed to be done about how one gets a mooring and what is fair. Thus, it was decided in April of '04 by the Harbor Commission to form a committee to help answer the issues regarding the moorings, hence the mooring master plan subcommittee. At the first meeting, it was decided to hire a consultant to research and come up with all these answers. The cost was going to be quite high, several hundred thousand dollars plus. So it was decided to form a task group of local individuals from the various interests in the harbor. And that was that field. Can you go back to that one? So, as you can see by this slide, we tried to include everybody and everything to get involved in coming up with this master plan. Harbor commissioners, resource staff, sheriffs, harbor patrol, residents, and the list goes on. And you can see, I think we pretty much included everybody. And we've been meeting, okay, now, let's see, okay. This is a shot of the 12 active mooring fields in the harbor. And there's 720 offshore moorings, 400 onshore moorings, as you heard before, 25 are county, which I think Councilman Webb asked me, and I didn't know. Eight of them are down by the county mooring area, obviously, by the harbor patrol. And the remainder are in front of bay shores. The next slide. Okay, this was, I won't read all this. This is just a quick, I think what's interesting here to me is that our timeline here is that in '04, we had the formation of the master plan. And we're working, 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 better part of three years. And suddenly, out of nowhere, the grand jury accuses us of not working. And I don't, and that was a very, it was a shocking piece of information. Because we basically, we were going to get there with their questions, but we, we got stuck with the mooring fields, which I'll show you next. The process to get these mooring fields, the boundaries of what we started after, the boundaries of the mooring fields were done years ago, kind of like with, well, the Army Corps of Engineers provided these, these boundaries. But as you'll see in the next, another slide, most of the boats aren't in the boundaries anymore. And no GPS back in those days. So it was difficult to, you know, line up this rock and that, that house over there with the big chimney. And that would be where the boats would get realigned. So obviously, over the years, it's been difficult to keep, keep things the way they are. But the evaluation process was we were going to test one mooring field at a time. And the first one was mooring field A, and it took three months. It was quite an effort. The, we did save probably way more than $200,000, we believe at this point, on that. But again, back to the process, the, I think the biggest point on this one is that the homeowners, boat owners, and commercial vessels were all considered in the boundaries and placement of the moorings, mooring fields. The objectives on that were obviously dredging, safety, liability, avoid mass relocations, spacing outreach, and administrative issues. Were all part of our objectives. And the parameters, bullet points there I'd like to bring out. We tried to, and the clearance between the mooring fields and the federal channel, we tried to keep a 75, well, we did, 75 feet minimum clearance on that. The, so another question would be, well, can we add more moorings? Do we have to take away moorings? And the bottom line is, we lost some, we gained some, we relocated some, but the bottom line is, it's about even. So if you're going to ask that question, can we get some more moorings? The answer is probably at this time, no. Okay, this is, this is interesting. This is an example of a recommended change. The red line is what we are recommending to do. The white line is what exists. And you can see, it's quite glaring, as I said before, the boats have been, you know, placed way outside the original boundary lines. So, the, we had, what we recommend to do on this is to adjust the four moorings to the east end in a southerly direction. The south border is drawn at 75 foot from the pier headline. And this maintains the channel at the present function width where it has functioned for many years. This satisfies adjacent residents, since it allows adequate width for proper navigation, but discourages use by very large vessels. This is what we did with every single, all 12 mooring fields. That's, in a nutshell, that's what we tried to do and maintain and did. Now, this is a.
Did your lines allow for more moorings, then?
Were you listening last time?
Homer, in some areas, yes. In some areas, no. It averages.
I don't get paid. Some areas, yes. Some areas, no. Bottom line is, I think it's going to be even, but we, I want you to know, we tried. We really tried. It just was, it was really tough. So this, this is an example of one of the hardest areas. It's just below Lido Peninsula. And what you're seeing here is a bunch of boats, but what you're looking at is an incredible effort done by one of our members who used satellites and things, various pictures and what have you, and came up with a way of, when the wind is blowing one direction, and then the next day the wind blows the other direction, the boats have to have clearance. And they move significantly. And what this shows, even though the wind is blowing at full force, there's still going to be space in between all of these boats. And what is, what is challenging with this field is there's going to be quite a few of boats that are going to be relocated. And of all the fields, this is probably one of the most difficult ones. So those are just two examples of what we went through with the boundaries of the moorings, mooring fields. And that's really all we were working on until the grand jury came along and, and made us speed up some of our admin work. So that's about the end of my report. If you have any other questions, happy to ask, answer them.
I'd just like to compliment you and your committee on all the really thousands of hours you had in going out and investigating the boundaries and trying to look at, at all the various different alternatives and, and come up with something that I think we can probably sell. I feel from what I've seen of it that you've done an excellent job and would like to compliment you and your committee members on it.
Well, thank you. That's certainly not me. I just sit up there and run the meeting, but these gentlemen out here, many of which are right behind me, would love to hear that. And they have put in countless hours and do deserve a great thank you.
Pat Donstotin on the back for me. He's a good guy.
Yes, he is. Ready?
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Just to transition a little bit, at the beginning of that process, being somebody who does this for a living, I said, how can a bunch of locals, you know, do work better than consultants? I can tell you that at the end of that process, I was absolutely convinced, not just because these people were friends, but because they had approached this with a kind of rigor and requirements that would have been exercised by a consultant if there were one that was that good. And more importantly, they went through an extraordinary outreach effort so that they contacted everybody on the fronting that they could get to on the fronting properties and slip, slip owners or permit holders along there. So the outreach by itself was a time-consuming. I'd, just from a technical standpoint, I'd like to re-echo the plaudits to everybody here. It was a marvelous effort. And the city deserves to have more citizen efforts like that. Speaking of that, I'm going to speak about the, sort of the, the infrastructure of the harbor, the non-exciting things, the procedural things, the stuff that keeps the harbor working.
Speaking of procedural thing, can you just introduce yourself for the record?
I'm sorry, procedural thing. John Coro, Harbor Commission, also a resident of the famous Balboa Island.
Thank you, John.
All of the uses that are covered here, all of the things that are covered here are seemingly not, who cares about essential services? You know, you sort of take them for granted. Somebody's providing them, we hope. Needed waterfront land uses, well, the market will probably take care of that. And where we have public lands, the city will certainly provide the appropriate things down by the water. And then improved city coordination among various agencies, committees, commissions, and certainly with council. Next slide. Thank you. What are these service facilities? Well, they're boatyards and shipyards for normal and emergency haulouts. We used to have 18. We now have four, perhaps five, that are generally available to the public, and two more that are used by waterside entities that either are commissioning boats or, as in the case of Duffy's, are renting them to the public. And those are important. The, this industry generates direct revenues of about $35 to $50 million. It's an essential industry. Why is it essential? We'll see a little bit later on economics why it's essential. It's not just to haul out boats for painting their bottoms or doing other service. It's the gateway through which, or portal, whatever you want to call it, through which probably 75 to 80 percent of the commissioning of new vessels, the addition of, the servicing of existing vessels, addition of equipment and so forth, takes place so that for every boatyard that has 30 employees in it, you have one and a half to two times the number of full-time employees in subcontractors who are bringing their skills and equipment and so forth through that portal onto those, those boats. That's money to the city in terms of taxes. It's revenue and a major economic engine. Marine construction barges and dredges, we see them putting around the harbor. They're essential to what happens out there. When we have a storm that brings debris down from the back bay and have to put up a storm boom, it isn't a city boat or a county boat that drags that boom into place. It's one of our, one of our, our mooring barges. And that's an important skill. And it's something that is an important action in the harbor. So there are essential things, not just the mundane replacement of moorings or other things, but both in the shipyards, when somebody's sinking, they've got to be rescued. You can put bags in there to keep it afloat for a while. You can keep the bilge pumps on for a while, but they've got to be hauled out of the water. And if we are not a harbor of refuge for sinking boats, our boats to be rescued through our, our boatyards, and if we can't drag booms into place and maintain the harbor with the fleet of construction barges and dredges that are permanently homeported here and are, are hometown people, who also generate a substantial amount of money. We have places in the harbor that are limited in their availability and accessibility, but are essential. We really only have two right now where you can load or offload things into the harbor for construction activities. And that's the Rhine Wharf and the Dunes Ramp, which is, costs money to use, even though it's theoretically a county facility, because it's county-owned, it's, it's operated by the private sector. So there's an additional cost to anybody that's going to put docks into the harbor. We used to have some other locations like that at the ends of streets. We really don't have that many anymore, and we may need some more in the future. We have one harbor maintenance boat, which is fairly small. It is city-operated, and it has done a marvelous job of doing all the things that this, that Harbor Resources has to do on its own hook, of cleaning up debris, checking pumpouts, enforcing codes, and so forth. That boat has really put in some service. It's, it's all we had, and it gets used immensely. Something perhaps would be helpful there to add to that. Harbor maintenance loading and unloading points, similar to the construction loading things. When we have trash in the harbor, or we have, back in, when was it, 87, 97, we had the El Nino event, when we had trees and Volkswagen's and everything else in the harbor, and it had to be hauled out. We only had those two locations where that debris can be hauled out. And we need third locations where it can just be a dock used for other purposes all the rest of the time, but we need to be able to bring a crane in with a long boom to pick up stuff from barges once it's collected. So we're suggesting and have incorporated into Marina Park's design and other locations around here some ideas about where these other activities can occur. Harbor safety rescue fire vessels, we're talking about not getting them, having them all in one place, but having sub-bases, if you will, for them to operate out of on a watch system, Marina Park being one, maybe up in the Turning Basin. That will reduce the amount of time that vessels have to be code three up the harbor at full tilt boogie. It'll also reduce the time that it takes them to get to the site if there are more scattered around. That's the way we locate our fire stations and our police stations in this city is, on the basis of response time. So we need to change that. And one other consideration is, we need to convince, at least while the county's in charge of this response, convince them that there is such a thing as a low-wake boat that can go at speed without creating the damage and the problems that happen at the present time. And we're going to be talking with the county, with the sheriff, in fact, in November about some of that technology. It's being, being looked at. Finally, public docks and restrooms. As someone who lives right adjacent to what is easily the most heavily used public dock on Balboa Island, which has five of the 10 that are in the harbor, I can, we can speak to that in some detail. We have a lot of public docks that are used by visitors and locals and so forth who are frustrated to discover that only about four of them have restrooms even within spitting distance of them. And that does create problems for those of us who live near them when people are looking for a restroom. Other issues related to visitors to the harbor when they're on a mooring or something like that, and they'd like to be able to go ashore and use a shower or do other things. We don't really have those facilities right now. Marina Park will provide some of that. Just, let's see, this is, just to refresh your memory, the, we have a number of pumpout stations in the harbor. Public ones are the Blue Diamonds. The private ones are these. That's an important service facility. Public piers, the Stars, five here, five along the peninsula. And then finally, some things that don't show up here, which are, I think, quite important. Our boatyards are grouped in three locations right now. We have our one boatyard here, Basin Marine. We have three along, or two along Mariners Mile. There used to be four or five there. We have the remainder, which used to be something on the order of eight to 10 in the Rhine Channel. We now have four in that location. The importance of this is that as real estate development pressures occur in situations like this, and in situations like this, as we've seen over the years, those boatyards yield to condo development or other things in place. Well, who cares? Well, who cares? That's the real estate, that's the real estate mix, and probably those people weren't very good boatyard operators, so they'd still be in business. There's an excuse for every one of those. Some are correct, some are incorrect. In any case, there is an ultimate sort of critical mass of boatyards that we're going to need in this harbor simply to serve the harbor. And we think we're getting darn close to that, and we're going to have to make some decisions about land uses, and I think that's up to a combination of the private sector and the public sector. One shining jewel in this, if you go to the next slide. We actually have two examples of boatyards here, just to point out. Here's Basin Marine on a little less than an acre. This boatyard in response, as well as the other one that, whoop, sorry. What did I do? Creature of evil here. This boatyard, Basin Marine, on a very small piece of property in the midst of million-dollar homes, is a classic example of how you can have chicken jowl, well-operated, well-managed, well-controlled uses, doing things that people see as industrial uses, evilness, next to my multimillion-dollar home. Again, if they're well-operated and well-run, they can exist next to each other. This kind of mixture is characteristic of a working harbor, and, and will have to be characteristic of a working harbor in the future. That boatyard is a classic example also of highly efficient operation in order to respond to the fact that the same number of boats, or greater number of boats, are still here, but there are fewer boatyards. So they have gotten to the point where they can run, on any given day, they'll have twenty to twenty-six boats in the yard. They work fifty to sixty boats through that yard in a week. They've got thirty regular employees, and on any given day, they've got anywhere from seven to four dozen sub consultants or part-time people in the yard, adding things to boats, doing other things. So this thing generates a direct revenue of several million dollars, and has indirect revenues of three to four times that in terms of what comes through there. Now, those revenues trickle down to the community in a number of ways, because many of the employees, many of the subcontractors are people that have been here for twenty-five, thirty, forty years, because it's a tight-knit organization. On the other side is Newport Harbor Shipyard, which obviously a much larger facility, generates proportionately larger revenues, has larger employees, and so forth. I'll get to the economic impacts of this in a moment. That's it in terms of just boatyards. Boatyards are one of the kinds of things, in the earlier slide, related to harbor service facilities. I should have also mentioned fuel docks and their support, ferry docks and their support, towing services, and service vessels, which are, there are dozens of those in the, in the harbor, ranging all the way from fuel and oil change to bottom cleaning to pumpout services and so forth. So we have a, a fleet that nobody sees here, except those of us that use their, their services, but they're essential to this place. Where do they live? Where do they go? That's the next slide. One of the things that you'll notice in the previous discussion about moorings is the need to allocate a certain number of moorings and certain pieces of shoreline for the mooring of these service vessels, and also for their accessibility to land to load and offload the things that they need. Next. Here's the, oh, it's a bad pun, bottom line. This harbor is an extraordinary economic engine. We've been trying for years to get a handle on exactly what it generates. We've had several studies done by others, not necessarily directed to the harbor-specific interests of the general plan, which said that there were about a thousand jobs, that the, the marine-related uses ranked fifth out of the ten major uses in the net income to the city. Net income being generates more revenue than costs in services or, or other, other costs from the city. And in that sense, they're ahead of residential and a whole series of other things that are negative. It's third in taxes and fees, which puts it above hotels. Hey, wait a minute, what about room tax? What about all those other things? Doggone. It's, a city consultant said it actually ranked above hotels. The Visitors Bureau and Chamber of Commerce, in some recent things, have hypothocated these numbers, four point, four point eight, or a thousand, direct and indirect jobs, and direct and indirect revenues of a billion dollars to the Newport area. I said, well, I'm not so sure of that. I sat out and, and with a number of sources that have looked at economic impact of boating up and down the state, primarily a state study done in two thousand and two, which I updated to two thousand and seven, I did a different calculation, and I said proportionally to the statewide numbers, what does Newport Beach generate in terms of the numbers of boats it has here and the numbers of jobs and other things? The number is actually, in two thousand and seven dollars, projected out to the end of the year, one point eight six billion dollars directly related to the direct costs, indirect, and stimulated revenues in this harbor. And I know that every one of you is saying, show me the, the homework, John. I will be very proud and pleased to show you that homework. It's really quite extraordinary, and surprised the daylights out of me. And any of you that have been following me on the, my work on the general plan and local coastal plan know that I've always wanted to know how much of an economic engine this harbor was, but we could never quite get our handle on it. The private sector is working on, some of the people in this audience are currently working on the possibility of getting Michigan State University, which has a excellent program for generating, for analyzing the economic impacts of harbors on communities and on individuals in those communities, and we may be looking at that as a device to look at other things. The rest of these are all considerations that we'll ask you to think about over the next few months. Many of our conversions of waterfront, water-dependent uses are one-shot deals. We change from something that generated continuing revenues across a whole basket of revenue sources, and we've got a one-shot thing where it's now condominiums, and they've been sold once, and all the revenues that were there before from water-dependent uses, marine-oriented uses, are now lost to the city, but there's been a desirable change, in theory, a desirable change in land use. We need to analyze those financial im- impacts when we think about making those kinds of decisions, because we're losing our chunk of that one point eight six billion dollars at a rate that's really quite extraordinary. In our various documents that have been created over the past several years, for a lot of hours of people's time, many hundreds of thousands of dollars, millions of dollars to consultant fees, the dilemma is, we now have a whole series of documents, they're not necessarily correlated, and we need to at least correlate them with respect to the water. We don't have, we're not there yet, we haven't figured out how to really use them as incentive tools. We need to be more proactive in using available incentive controls to get the private sector to build these projects better than they're proposing right now. We're just not challenging them to do better. And then finally, as with dredging, the city may want to consider investing either in partnership with the private sector or on its own, creating land and facilities to preserve harbor services, improve access and infrastructure, but base it on a user-paid basis. Next, please. I'll zip through these, because we're running out, Long City's run out of time. There are a number of important areas in the harbor that are both areas of opportunity and risk. I'll just list them, think about them. Mariners Mile, Lido Marina Village, the Ardell property, all of which may hopefully eventually be linked by a waterfront walkway, but in almost none of them has serious thought been given about what they're going to do about the waterside as yet. The Rhine Channel, you've heard discussed earlier, and that will be another area. Lower castaways in the former museum site up at the, up at the bridge are both sites of, of potential and risk. Lido Peninsula, Lido Peninsula, where the Newport Harbor Boatyard is, could, could last as a boatyard and boat-supporting uses, stack storage and so forth, for the fifteen years of the remaining lease, or it could flip over to another use in very short order. Those need to be considered, the consequences of that need to be considered. Finally, very quickly, you were asking about, or you were told about bulk headlines, pier headlines, and project lines. Here you are, folks. Example, bulk headline, pier headline, project line. One of the things that we need to start using and that we're proposing be done through the HAMP is to composite the data that we have on the land parts of the, of our city with the data that we have for the water area. How deep is it? Where is the yew grass? And so forth, through the HAMP, so that that data is available to anybody on staff, anybody that's on council, any public citizen, and particularly developers, landowners, and those that they hire to work, so that they will understand what the rules are, not just up to the edge, but at the edge and into the water and back in. So we're, we're strongly suggesting and working toward putting that information into the HAMP to be used with the other information, that the HAMP becomes a resource for anybody working along the water's edge. Additionally, things like where are the tidelands would help us understand situations about their use and how they're supposed to be included. I won't read this, we'll just go ahead and talk about an example where perhaps a little bit better information on the Newport Marina project might have helped all of us through some misunderstandings recently that I believe have been resolved or will be resolved. And it in particular says to us, we need a better municipal code and clearer language. We heard the request for proper definitions. And in this case, this code was read one way by staff, a different way by others, and so forth, and it ironically created a completely different understanding of how the project was to be developed in relation to the water. We think we've gotten to the bottom of that issue, and I see the glass as more than half full in that direction. But where, I'm ending that, that comment by just saying again, we're just not getting the developments that all these new documents that we've created at great cost, great effort and time, are intended to provide us with. We're just, we're not pushing the envelope in terms of asking the development sector to go beyond just minimal, minimal acquiescence to our regulations. We need to give them an incentive to do better, and we deserve better development in this harbor. We really do. And some examples of where it has worked, this process has worked very well, the Balboa Marina Project, which after several tries was able to be resolved into a design that I think everybody was, not everyone was happy with, but it, it worked much better than the several that had preceded it. Lido Peninsula Slip Refurbishment, we made use of the results of the mooring subcommittee study to decide what the extent of those slip changes and other things could be. So we're using a document that's in process as a way of making decisions that are on a daily permit-type basis that come before us. So this system is working, and if we just have the book of the harbor that anybody comes into this town or is here can go to when the harbor is a, is a part of the decision-making process, it'll be a lot simpler. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Hi, Ralph.
Ralph Rod, I'm harbor commissioner, and congratulations for sitting through this. When we started the Harbor Committee before the Commission, we had no idea of the complexity, and I think you can see a little bit this evening of the complexity of what's going on in the harbor. And before, it was just kind of rolling along, but now we're trying to make it a better harbor. And each of the harbor commissioners are here for one reason. How do we make it a better place for the residents, for the visitors, and all of them? And I'd also like to thank, because it's been really exciting to see what's happened, but Homer Bluedow and Dave Kiff have been fabulous. Right now, you have tremendous staff in Tom Ross Miller and Chris Miller. Couldn't be better, and thank you, council people, for supporting what is the most valuable resource the city has. The harbor differentiates us from Garden Grove and everywhere else. So thank you. This is going to be real quick, and I went to Newport, Rhode Island, and I said, gosh, I'm from Newport, and they said, you're not a local, but they do things really well. Imagine the families here that have a boat, and they're somewhere in Newport Beach, they're not in Newport Beach, coming to Newport Beach. And the first thing that you do in your boat, you come in the jetty and your family's excited, and you pull up to the harbor department office, the sheriffs. Well, that's kind of scary, and you ask for, where's stuff around the harbor? There really isn't a lot of collateral materials or anything, but they'll escort you to anchor your boat, while it's anchored in the middle of the harbor. But please stay on the boat. Well, I'd like to take my kids to the restaurant or the fun zone. Well, somebody has to stay on the boat. Okay, we'll leave mom on the boat. No, we won't. We'll leave the dog on the boat or something. We'll go, and then there's no place to tie up. Public piers, they were only, could stay there for a short time. Thank gosh, the Harbor Commission has changed that. But we need to be more friendly. The Newport Harbor is one of the least friendly harbors in the state. So one of the things we want to work on is to have that, and we'll be coming to you hopefully with a marketing plan. What are some of those materials we can hand? Where are the restaurants you can go to? Where are the places you can shop? Where are the fun things you can go with kids and stuff? And so when a person first comes into the harbor, by the way, our sheriffs are good people, they're nice people, but if we gave them more materials, it would help out. Besides the marketing plan, we're working on developing municipal code revisions that would allow for short-term and long-term mooring areas. We've talked about that. Also, with this development, John talked about some of it, having more visitor-serving areas, so people can tie up around the Newport Pier for two hours and then go to restaurants and spend money, where they can go to Lido Marina Village and tie up Duffy's. That's a, that's a great thing around the harbor. You need to rent one sometime, they're really wonderful. But where do you go once you do it? We don't have many restaurants that will allow it. So more visitor-serving, make it friendly to work on it, is what we're trying to do. Make it a better harbor for our residents, make it a better harbor for our guests. One of the projects is the Rhine Wharf Dock. There's a big area at the Rhine Wharf. It could easily be a dock. We have been working on this project for almost four years now. When I was chairman, my goal was to see it completed. I failed miserably, but we're getting closer. It's just a simple little dock, but it would allow boats to tie up, go to the Cannery Restaurant, go to Newport, the Blue Water Grill, or anywhere else. Get out and utilize the harbor, be a visitor-friendly. I think it's budgeted, I think it's moving along, and I think you have supported it, so we'd like to thank you for that. Harbor-wide, we talked about at some point, consider, they do it in Marina Del Rey, they do it in Long Beach, and that is a subsidized water taxi of some form. We'll be researching it and coming to you in the future with that as a possibility. There's not enough places to tie up, and we looked at moorings, we said, gosh, how do we get more moorings? Well, one thing we're taking a look at is an offshore marina. We already, at Newport Harbor Yacht Club, have taken a forty-foot mooring, put a finger on it, now we have four boats tied to it instead of one. That makes sense. We're thinking outside the box, we're going to need your support as we do it, and we'll come to you with the possibility of an offshore marina, which is... of an offshore marina, which is, would be connected to land by boats, just similar to a yacht club. Restrooms, trash, facilities, and others, we all need, and we're working to it. Public Works Department, this is the Rhine Wharf. We talked about that, so move on. We need it. We're doing it. The fun zone area, the museum, Newport Harbor Nautical Museum, is coming ahead with plans and, and at this point, I'm going to just, everybody, I just need to take a break, because when I saw this, it reminded me of one of the city's longest-term, greatest guys. Art Gronski, as we know, just passed away, and he was integral in all of this, and I hope that what we do will leave a legacy for Art, a real, Newport Beach is Art Gronski, or Art was Newport. So thank you. But there's exciting projects coming on in the Newport Harbor Nautical Museum. Marina Park will be coming on, and we'll talk about that later. But this will show you how many people are Newport Beach residents versus the outside of California and charity and everything, county and out of state. Our harbor is used by our residents, and it is also visitor-serving. Okay, moving on quickly. We have all these offshore moorings, and all these people are on their offshore moorings. How do they get to their mooring? Well, they have to have dinghies, they have to have small boats. So what we have now is public piers. Well, a public pier has only short-term birthing opportunities, and it's just not fair to expect these people to get out to their boats and then get back, and what do they do with their dinghies? So unfortunately, they've been tying them up against the code, and they do get confiscated or impounded. Then they have to come get them, or there are auctions. We don't want to do that. It's not good for anybody. So what we're suggesting and have suggested for quite a while are some alternatives. Chris? One of the alternatives is to take the little public pier, as you can see, and add a finger to it. It's easy, it's inexpensive, and it will solve wonderful, it presents wonderful opportunities. The first one was at 19th Street. This is at 15th Street, and then we have one at Fernando Street.
Go back to 15th Street.
And these are just trials. We want to, there's other opportunities around the harbor, but let's try these three areas that's adjacent to the biggest mooring area, and they're really critical, and they work well. Question? No, you just wanted to see it. If you notice, go back to that. If you notice on the left is the pump-out station, so that's what that pier is on the left and for boats to come and use. But, so taking a small public pier, and by just putting fingers, we can utilize it for the dinghy. Again, how are we making Newport Beach a friendlier, more user-friendly place? These are some of our suggestions. And that's Fernando Street. Other alternatives that we can look at is onshore to put racks, and depending on where they are, maybe Marina Park might be an opportunity to store some of these dinghies or different ways of doing it. So hopefully I didn't take too much time. Thank you very much. You, it's a great harbor, and we're just trying to make it better.
Thank you, Ralph.
Good evening, Karen Ryan, Harbor Commissioner. I'm the new kid on the block, so I only get one slide.
You're not so new anymore, Karen. You've been doing it a couple of years now, I think.
Well, only a little over a year.
A little, okay, a year.
Still on the learning curve. I know, it's a good slide. That's not even, oh, yeah. Basically, I have a subcommittee that we're looking at the, several of the problems with the peered boats of the harbor. Basically, the problem, there's two problems. One is there is a current regulation as to how far a boat can hang over the dock, and there are multiple boats in, actually, I may have two slides. There are multiple boats that are in violation of this, and we don't currently have the resources to deal with the violations. And so the question is, how do we deal, and what are we going to do with these violations in the future? And the other more important question is, does the current rule make sense? It used to be you could overhang half the width of your boat, and then they've realized that if you were going to tie your boat sideways, because some docks allow for that, how do you do that? They changed the rule to you could overhang the entire width of your boat. But with any rule, that means people are going to be out there designing a boat to enhance the rule or to break the rule or to stretch it, and does that rule make sense? So what we're looking at now is, is there a rule that makes more sense? Is it a safety issue for the current rule? Could it be designed in such a way that boats could overhang so far in the harbors to be difficult? And with anything, looking at the big picture, what do we want the harbor to look like? Right now, it's, you know, a fabulous small boat harbor. What are we going to want it to look like in the future? So it's a planning issue and a safety issue that we're going to be working on, and certainly input from the council would be of help as to your plans or thoughts of the harbor.
Thank you, Karen. Okay, does that bring us to the end of the PowerPoint presentation? Very good. Well, that was very comprehensive, very thorough. Obviously, there's a lot of issues floating around the harbor, so to speak, and...
How do you comment on this?
I know. It's actually a lot of information to absorb, but it's, at least in my view, it's an excellent start to managing our harbor and the resource a lot better than we probably have in the past. Does anybody else have any comments on the presentation?
Yeah, I'd like to compliment the Harbor Commissioners on all the work they put into this. I know that I got the small-picture version of it, and I asked Tom to get me a big-picture version and then a copy of the PowerPoint so I can just put it on my computer and keep it for future reference because there's so much good information here and a lot of questions I have on things from time to time, and just want to compliment you on all the work, very comprehensive, very thorough, and I think it's a good start on really, you know, establishing a good comprehensive program for our harbor.
Leslie?
I also wanted to recognize and thank the Commissioners for all of your hard work. Appreciate it.
Don, your light's on.
Well, I, it's, it's almost overwhelming when you look at all of the questions you have asked us to look at and give you advice on, the mooring fees, mooring transfers, where to place them. And then you get into the dredging issues are very complex, the visitor-serving issues, the issues of how do we regulate a property owner's right to redevelop his property and still protect some of the marine industries. Providing visitor-serving, so these, I think, is, all of these items are items that we are looking to you to provide us additional information above and beyond what you have. I think that, that we have to probably handle each one of these separately as we go through it, and, but I would like to compliment you on an overwhelmingly great presentation. I got more, learned more today on the harbor than I thought I, I thought I know most of it, but you guys definitely increased my database.
Nancy?
I just, all of this emphasizes for me the critical importance of the Harbor Area Management Plan, that umbrella that's going to pull all these elements together. So I'm really looking forward to that, and thank you for all your work getting us this far.
Keith?
Well, I would just echo what's already been said. Clearly, as was pointed out by your presentation, the harbor is the most important resource in this entire city. It's what defines Newport Beach, and we are truly fortunate to have such qualified and motivated and involved Commissioners as we do who are attending to this resource, and I commend you for a fabulous report.
Mike?
Yeah, you know, the statement here tonight that resonates with me is if we would only treat our harbor as well as we treat our streets, wouldn't we have a nice harbor? And to me, this issue of dredging in the lower harbor is the equivalent of having every street in Newport Beach full of potholes, and we really need to zero in on that and figure out a way to get a solution in place. To me, that's, that is a goal that we should all be able to coalesce around here. Look forward to working on that.
All right, I'm going to open up for public comment if there's anybody in the public that wants to comment on what they've heard about the presentation. Okay, seeing no, we'll close the public comment, and I'll open it up for public comment on non-agenda items. Okay, seeing no one. We're going to adjourn then to our, well, we have no closed session. We'll just adjourn until our regular 7 o'clock meeting. Thank you all for coming. Thank you, gentlemen, and Karen.
Don, that's a cell site on top there for you.
Yeah.
It sounds good. It's a mobile cell site.
There's two.
Mobile cell site.
There's two.